Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Independent City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, March 25th at 7:30 in the morning. And we had a couple of nice days, but we -- the rain will be good. It will make my grass grow. Um, Tom's will give me a like. Yeah, right. Great. I'll look for a chill. Everybody's here except for Jerry, who is excused this morning. Any public comment? Visitors, anything they'd like to say? Okay, I don't see anybody moving to the microphone. Just keeping you folks up to speed on things. Council of government meeting. We've had following up on lots of projects at the regional level with Greg Ellis being the new regional economic -- regional economics person.
Gordon.
Yeah, he's a -- that was good. We were able to get him connected up. Just working on all the projects that happened with the multiple governments. And I did have a chance to thank Nancy Boyer, who from Council of Governments, who was very helpful with our police chief search and all the activities that were involved with that. So she worked out really well. Some brief council liaison reports. And Counselor Lodge has a little bit of library report possibly tying in with Robin. Do you have anything you'd like to share at this point or?
I apologize for not having an opportunity to make an official report, but both Robin and I have some personal issues. One thing I'd like to mention is not my report, but it's Friends of Library. And that is that we had a big fundraiser with Friends of Library for a movie theater on March 10th and made over $2,000. So that's, yeah, so we're happy about it. And if I could, Mayor, do a little report next month.
Sure, no problem. Happy to have that. Thank you.
And while I'm on the public high, I'd like to thank everybody. Karen and Mayor and all the councilors and the staff for beautiful flowers that I received when I got home from hospital. And they're -- they just now die.
Oh.
Yeah. They were beautiful. Thank you all.
We'll like it back.
Thank you.
Great. Museum Board, Counselor Linska.
Okay. I missed the last meeting. Okay, it's going to be small, too. The storage units have been empty. The glass case to protect military uniforms has been installed. Thanks to Society President Robert Richards for building the frame. National genealogy gave what was March 8. A four grade class of 23 students from Ash Creek Elementary came with six students for a tour with Mr. Edward. A small group of Cub Scouts came for a tour. Spring news weather has been mailed out. A new society website has been launched. And then there's a invitation. It says you are essential. Independence Heritage Museum Volunteer Recognition Luncheon is going to be April 12th from 12:30 to 2:30 PM. And it's to recognize all the volunteers that can help me at the museum. And it will be right here at the supermarket center. Here's that. The invitation.
Okay.
And it's going to be here.
Is that Saturday? Friday?
April 12th.
Saturday.
Seven.
Thank you.
From 12:30 to 2:30, and the food's going to be provided.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that. Counselor Takis on the Traffic Safety Commission. If they had anything you'd like to share?
I'll keep it brief. There really isn't anything too terribly exciting. Our next meeting's going to be April 16th, I believe. That's a lot. Good. Okay, great. All right. The city manager report.
Good morning.
Good morning to you, Mayor, councilors. Good morning. So just a few things. Strategic plan, we've been seeing that in our notes for a while. It is now out and about with our staff being circulated. Thirteen pages built up on the goals that you set when you did your planning session and added quite a bit of information and some more strategies and tasks. So we'll have that to you, I believe, the first meeting in April for your consideration as well. So anyway, that's out for review now. Sean and I had the opportunity, and probably fairly timely given how things are working, to attend a conference of Doing Business in Indian Country. That was a real interesting opportunity, a really interesting deal on the planet. The gentleman that put it on is not Indian, but he has been in the business for a very long time with the Forest Service and was largely responsible for doing -- helping establish the Medicine Wheel Monument in Wyoming. It's a very, very important site and a very, well, travel site. Anyway, a lot of insight there. I think we might find an opportunity to share some of them with you sometime in the near future, some of the things we learned. It would be helpful, I think, to the extent that we're able to reschedule our meeting with the man on here. So we're trying -- we're working that as well. So interestingly enough, they were supposed to be speakers at this event, and they were not able to attend that either. So we're not feeling like we almost had a missed opportunity there. The Independence Station, as you're aware, the foreclosure has proceeded ahead. All the paperwork has been filed with the court. Court orders have been entered, and now we're just moving towards sketching of the sale. So that's moving the pace. We don't have a date yet back when that sale's going to occur, but we understand that they're going to try and expedite that as much as they can. So given the sheriff situation, that's very helpful, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes as well. I'm leaving here shortly for a conference in Washington Northwest Managers. That's our annual conference of the city managers from Alaska, Washington, Oregon, and Idaho. Those pretty much is Washington, Oregon, and generally attend those sessions. There's a spam from the others, but it's only gone for the next few days for them. They're working hard. Lori is working hard. I just watched it from afar at this point in time. The budget process is proceeding. A lot of the staff are working in. And I can hear the wheels grinding away upstairs in various departments, cussing and whatever. But that's moving along. The -- we've had -- many of you attended the Chamber banquet. We've had a recap, but I didn't know if any of you had any thoughts that you wanted to share. I think generally the group felt like it was a positive event. I think it felt like the location was a good choice and created an atmosphere that was a little different, but I think, you know, it was real favorable. So I don't know if anybody wanted anything that we wanted to share with me on that or not, or, or councilor. Okay, I'll move it along. I think that turned out pretty nicely, and so.
Yeah, but they also made more money than ever.
They did make more money than ever. And that's always a good thing for the chambers, is they're using more money. We're having a little bit of an issue with the Team Search Trust, which is the insurance provider, so I hope that we'll get through that. Otherwise, I'll catch up with some at a later meeting. But at this point, we're going a little bit back and forth with trying to sell some old claims, and some of them very old. So we're working on the issue, and if there's more report, I'll share it up with you later today. But anyway, we're working. And then finally, I think we're working with Wimpick and the -- and you can now find the city council meeting videos linked to our website. So if you're ever looking for that, Karen is putting that up for you right now in front of the -- so you can see how that works. So those are YouTube videos, I believe, is that correct? And so that should be a little bit handier for folks as they're trying to see what happened at these meetings.
So if you just wanted to see a city council meeting, just go to the city calendar from our website. You can also go to Wimpick's website, but if you were wanting to see a specific council meeting day, just go to the council meeting, February 25th. And right there, oh, sorry, don't have to come back yet, sorry. Let's try that. And then.
Down at the bottom under some -- it was on the 25th.
Sorry about that. So video recording, there you go. Right there. You can just go straight to.
Council meeting, it's Tuesday, February 11th at 7:30 in the evening. It's not snowing, and the water ain't rushing. And. Oh, boy. I mean, what are you talking about? Did you want to play that fruit to conclusion?
How quickly are they posted?
They're posted once a month, and usually by the -- usually by the end of the month.
By the end of the month, around the end of the month?
Yeah.
So I think it's really cool to have, for those citizens that can't attend the council meeting, to have you exactly what happened in the past.
Okay. Good. Thank you. I'm leaving up next. Yeah, I think I do. Chief Mason's out this week. So I think there I both, we talked about some of the ongoing conversations we've had with the sheriff and what happened, you know, subsequent, been happening subsequent to the levy failure. And we were at our Friday breakfast, our Pope Breakfast, our normal monthly meeting of the elected officials and the managers. And the sheriff shared with us at length what is going on currently, which is the loss of yet another additional four of his employees this past month. Two of those, I mean, that's two more than really he needs to lose right now, but frankly, you know, people are looking at the situation, saying, how long will I be able to retain the position I have, even if I'm here beyond this next budget round? And the sheriff's in a tricky position, really not being able to fill those positions that he has available to him. So the long and the short of that is that the coverage is now going to be rather drastic from, I don't know, from 20 hours to 10 hours a day. This is starting to be something of significant concern to all of us. I know our staffs, I know the city managers and the chiefs were scheduled to meet, well, they're scheduled to be something today, I believe, this morning, to have a further conversation about, you know, some of the things at least from our perspective, how where we can get some coverage, you know, at least in our median area, and how that would work. But this will definitely impact on all of us. So it's a conversation that we're, you know, the mayor has been asking the county firstly every month to report back to us what they're doing and how we can be helpful. And right now, I don't know that there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of real substantive plan in place, maybe on for several months. Mayor, I don't know if you want to add something? Yeah, the -- this is faster than the sheriff originally planned, but when people are knowing that their position might go away, a number of their deputies have taken other positions, which would be understandable. Ten hours of sheriff patrol coverage is not very much. It's putting a real stress on the municipals, all the cities in Polk County, including Salem. You end up with a dilemma. Where do you allocate officers? And what's the appropriate response if something's happening in Pointe Vista or 18 miles out that way? You send someone, you not? You know, there's everything from liability issues, there's moral issues, there have been some really awful things that have happened in some other counties in Southern Oregon. It is a real challenge. And so all of a sudden, if something is happening out that way, where, you know, and if somebody from our jurisdiction or somewhere else goes, then who's here? And so there are some real challenges. We have not heard any requests to go to the voters for additional funds. I did talk to Senator Wyden when he was here. I met with him after the meeting for quite an extensive conversation. They're trying to move some things forward at the federal level, but that moves at the speed the federal government does. So this is pretty significant. The sheriff is answering calls himself now, and it is a real, it's a real challenge. Is there anything that I -- the fire folks are even concerned because they've got certain situations where they need to have an officer dealing with sometimes certain type of crash It's a real challenge, and there aren't really many great solutions at this point. Is that clear? Anybody have questions?
Do you know if they have a reserve, reserve officers? Continue to see them.
Well, I don't know, but I do know that their coverage is, their 10 hours regardless of how they deploy their forces at this point.
I guess what they do is send help there that sometimes reserve officers can take their traffic scenes or things like that.
I don't think they're even dealing with those now. You know, it's. A lot of, a lot of having a reserve force or cadet force means you have to have supervisory officers dedicated to doing that, and their folks, their people are all on the roads. They're using sergeants and command officers under control throughout, largely because it's actually they're not feeling the less costly for because of the overtime costs for their patrol officers. So everybody is all hands on at this point. And I don't know that they have the time to, basically, we only have a reserve cadet force, but we can report back a little more, and when the chief's back next time, they'll know a little better than I do. This will be an ongoing conversation because there are some very significant, I see some very significant policy issues that we may have to weigh in on. So more as it comes. Anything else you'd like to report on today? No. You have me later in the agenda, but otherwise. Oh, boy. Okay. Great. We have unfinished business under some right of way, and who's carrying that one? Mr. Mike.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor. Also, bear with me a little bit, I'm fighting off a chest cold. Before you now, just one of three related action items that we're bringing before you that are related. As you know, we've been working with Mr. Bill Levy on River Drive for a while now in some rezoning action and vacating properties, trying to clear up the property situation over there for him under the agreement that we have with him regarding an easement agreement for the city a couple of years ago now. Before you, the first action is a vacation petition that we first brought before you in February. At that time, you heard a staff report, and we voted to put that request to a public hearing. That's what we're bringing forward to you today now. First action item involves just that little piece. In your packet, you'll see the exhibit. There's a little piece in back of Bill Levy's house, and that piece is the piece, the subject piece in question with this action item, this first one. He owns the property there, and he's petitioned to vacate that piece, and staff did have trouble with it. There's no utilities there, it's blackers, basically. I guess Karen, maybe you could help us with the public hearing portion of this? Will they take testimony?
They can take testimony. I have not received any written comments.
Okay. So do I need to officially open one? And at the conclusion of staff report, then I'll officially open the public hearing? So are we at that point, Mike?
Yes, we are. I'll just let you know that per ORS requirements, that public notice has been properly issued. The, all of the action items before you have been coordinated with the city attorney. So we're asking at this point, did you approve the vacation petition before you're out of the public hearing?
Okay. So I now declare open a public hearing related to this matter. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say about this? I see no rush to the microphone this morning, and Karen has previously said that there's no written testimony, so without objection from anybody, I'm closing the public hearing. Mike, is there anything else that you need to say?
There is not.
Okay.
I think you're all familiar with what we're doing. We've been talking about it for a while now.
Any questions for staff? Okay, this is an action item.
I move to read the proposed ordinance, Council Bill Number 2014-05, in full as the text is contained in the council packet for the first time.
The motion, second, through discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries.
An ordinance vacating a portion of an alley line to the east of River Drive and stating an effective date.
I move to read the proposed ordinance, Council Bill 2014-05, for the second time by final only.
Motion, second, discussion. Here, no discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
An ordinance vacating a portion of an alley line to the east of River Drive and stating an effective date.
Dan.
I move to adopt the proposed ordinance, Council Bill 2014-05.
Second. Motion, second, discussion, everybody's okay.
Aye.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Bill has passed, will be assigned ordinance number 1529.
How about we just keep rolling into the next part, if that's okay?
Yes.
There's a slight adjustment. We'll just kind of keep on the same vein. Keep going.
Yes. These properties, we've also discussed before. We, staff has come to you, and we had a petition for vacation of this piece, which is the diagonal piece that carried what is now a vacant piece meant to carry the sewer line at one time. We were under the impression at the time that we could vacate that piece, and doing legal research with city attorney and Karen and myself, it was discovered that actually that piece is real property and can't, you cannot just, you can't just vacate. You need to declare it real property and dispose of it that way. In addition, there's another alley that although the property, the land surveyors have told us that the city has vacated that piece, that's this piece here, right along River Drive, that it actually hasn't been legally vacated. In other words, sometime in the past, some decades ago, a former city council took action to vacate the property, but it wasn't done legally. So rather than go through the process of tracking that all the way down, the city attorney suggested that we simply vacate that alley legally under our legal procedure once again. So we're trying to clean up all of these things at once tonight, today with you. So there actually are two separate items, but they're related. One of them, we need to do the easement, the stories we need to declare as real property to dispose of it and relinquish it as real property. The other piece is an alley, and we're asking that we initiate a vacation procedure like you just finished for that other little piece. So we would come back to you again for the alley to clean that up one more time, and you'll hold a public hearing and vacate it at that time.
Questions for staff? Go ahead.
Yeah, so I see there's other properties for this easement process. Will people relinquish going, or is all of that Mr. Levy's property?
All of that is Mr. Levy's property.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Are we okay with this? I think we have to have a motion for this, sort of moving property around. Need an official motion, please.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 14-1377, a resolution declaring tax lot number 113 as surplus and authorizing staff to initiate real property surplus proceedings.
Second. Motion, second, discussion. Are we okay? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Kim.
There's one more motion.
Uh, no, this was a.
The second I need to.
Oh, you need the second one also.
We need to initiate.
Excuse me, I got you. I got you. Please do.
Okay. I move to authorize initiation of a right of way vacation for the alley in Block 10, Dorpstown, and direct staff to set a public hearing at the next convenient council meeting. Second.
I have a motion, second. Everybody okay with this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, and. Mike, are you doing the CDBG?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah. I'm just, you know, I was trying to keep you just kind of rolling here.
As you're aware, in December, we had submitted an application to the Oregon Infrastructure Financing Authority for a community development block grant in the amount of $150,000. That's for a recycled water use plan, and that definition of that is a, basically, a sewer effluent spray application program. We were awarded that grant, and before you now is the contract, and you're required to take action on it to approve the contract before you can move forward. There'll be some other actions coming before you regarding this project, but to start, we'll leave the contract signed.
Questions for staff? The magic funds, that's in our reserve, sewer reserve fund.
No, there are no magic funds required.
No, I can't say all magic funds. There's not required in this?
No.
Okay. My goodness, it is long. 14 pages of word for words and 1,000. Yes, and the multiple references or something. Only a lawyer could enjoy it.
You are?
Yes, you have some insomnia. There you go. This is an action item.
Are we two, the three separate options now?
Yes, please.
Is that right?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll start with A. Authorize, I'd like to move to authorize the mayor to accept and execute the community development block grant contract for $150,000 for creation of a recycled water use plan.
Motion, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Okay, we hit the next two. Now, this is pro forma stuff that we have to have. Somebody else would like to do this one? Nancy can.
Let me do it again.
There are, you know, we missed a few meetings. There you go.
To authorize the mayor to sign a determination of exemption from environmental review for a planning only project.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Somebody else can do.
I move to authorize Mike Daino, Community Development Director, to serve as the certifying officer and designated employee for the project. Second.
Motion is second. I don't know, but this might guide.
Not question.
Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, thank you. Appreciate it. Great, okay. That's the pro forma stuff that we have to do today. And, Mr. Klein, I put this matter on the agenda. It has been a considerable time since we've had a proper evaluation with our city manager, and he is owed one so that we can formalize our communications. Although I don't think there's any challenges of informal communication, but we do owe it to him to provide the formal. What I wanted to do is talk amongst our council today, what David did, but on how we would like to do that. So this is the process discussion of how. So, this is a process discussion of how we want to move forward with the evaluation. And, does anybody want to share any thoughts? Or I can keep rolling, but...
Yes.
Okay. Personally, I'm not, I don't think it's, the tool is as important as doing it. What David and I have talked a little bit about is that you provide a self-evaluation first, or recall our conversation, and share that with us and then we could respond to that. I'm, there's all sorts of different tools we could use. Do you want to make any comments? I think last time we did this, I think we pretty much modeled that format. I did provide, I believe, you know, some essence of the self-evaluation and then really I think we went to more of a, just an informal discussion, round table discussion, which frankly, I find a little more comfortable and useful, I think. I think those tools tend to force you where you may, you know, into a non-comfort zone for everybody. I'm not sure they're all that helpful. Your call, but I liked the approach to it last time, which was really just you reacted to the document that I provided you and then whatever further information you need to share in terms of direction, if you're responsible.
I have a question. In the past, we've used forms, you know, and you said that we could address the various areas of...
I'm sorry, we're having a spy on us four times around there.
Yeah, and take it on and think about it and look through it and write down our thoughts prior to coming to here.
Right.
And I thought, I found that very helpful. I can gather my thoughts a little bit and evaluate or not about, you know, whatever I thought.
Lea also has a document that basically talks about how the manager, a city manager, we can share that with you as well. I think they've stung that on their website. So, we can get you some sample forms or just one, or just any one form, but not a lot of references and then get you the, you know, get you the guide, if you will.
Is this something that you want to have in public or is it...
I'm not a big fan. I think it's, I don't have anything to hide or believe in you told me that, but I think more importantly, I think it's more relaxing for us to sit as a group around the table and have a more forthcoming discussion. I don't know, having a public discussion serves that, you know, the most interest.
It's your, I think it's, would be up to you.
Yeah, it is.
It has.
It is, it is. I'd rather do it in the executive session.
I kind of like Nancy's idea, having it on paper so that way we can gather our thoughts and then do it open and if we have something else, we can always make an appointment with you and it can help you. So, either way, it's unflusible.
Why don't we get you those, the paperwork? I'm sorry, I didn't mean it, Mary, or... That, you're thinking exactly the same thing. I'd, take a look and make sure everybody's happy with the paperwork, because that was what the intent was along the way, is that whatever format we would use, we would have it in advance, they can take a look, scribble as they would like and then we would set a time to do that.
I would certainly like to make a review of the process when we're done, available to the public.
Oh, yeah. I think so. So, are we all talking the same things? So, we can get a couple of different, do people feel we need a couple of different ones or what we've used in the past be okay as a functional starting place?
I think, I'll go ahead.
I just thought last year's process worked well.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of, is keep rolling. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Certainly had enough areas.
Yeah, I think so.
And can we, can we set a time? Obviously not, not the next meeting. I need more time than that to do my homework. And the meeting after that is going to be at the high school, which is not an appropriate venue, but either the first or second meeting in May?
Sure. Yeah, we can...
To do what?
To do the evaluation.
But it's not going to be in public, right?
No, but it would be an executive session.
Okay, okay, okay.
That's a very annoying buzz.
Yes, it is.
There you go.
Is that your fault?
Why don't I have, if I could, I'll have Karen work with you, Mayor, on the forms from last time. It's fine. And I'll work on the self-evaluation piece separately. Okay. Is everybody okay with everything?
Yes.
All right? That sounds good. All ready? Move right through there. Is there anything else that we need to do this morning?
I move to Karen.
All favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, we're done. Thank you.